Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:00 PM, Monday, May the 6th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Monticello District 82 School Board. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing in the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
For the record, we'd like to note that Member Jeff Hegley is absent this evening. We are anticipating a late arrival for Member Melissa Curtis. We do have a quorum of four, so we can proceed with the agenda at this time. So at this point, we are going to approve our tentative agenda to a permanent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seben, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Tentative agenda is approved to be our meeting agenda for the evening, 4 and 0. We have no citizens' comments. We're moving on to fiscal stability. This is a consent agenda item. We have approval of minutes from April the 15th and personnel matters. Members received those in their packet ahead of time and had opportunity to ask any questions ahead of time to clarify information on those. Is there any questions or discussion from the board on personnel and minutes? So I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seben, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Member pass, motion passes 4-0. Moving on to collaborative connections. Once again, we are blessed to have donations from the community for some of our programs, and I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent Eric Olson.
So Curtis, about the doors, can you go? Thanks. All right, we have two donations that we get to bring forward here today. The first one is from MEDA, Mentorship Education and Drug Awareness. And all of our principals do an amazing job working with our county in order to look for resources like this, and I happen to be at a meeting where I watched Ms. Hanson advocate for improvement in the area of vape education. And so this sponsorship from the MEDA organization came to our high school, $500 to help educate and provide licenses for Monticello High School to use with their students. And the second one is Gary Brandt, Vice President of Holiday Gas Stations, who brought forward office furniture valued at $10,000 for Pinewood Elementary. So both of them are going to be great things for both of those buildings, so. Any questions? I don't know if we have Ms. Gilmore, if she wants to say anything about the office furniture or the intended use.
Actually, would you step up to the, and tell us about that? Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's something easy, I think, to talk about.
I always get pretty excited.
Our new head custodian, Scott Ayaro, was contacted about some possible furniture. And so we have, we have teacher chairs, we have file cabinets, we have tables, we have desks, really a lot of things that, that I had on my list of things to purchase with capital dollars, and we weren't able to purchase. So this really is a blessing and just thrilled to be able to have the partnership with quality station stores.
Thank you. Along the same note, I wanted to point out, for those that read the Monticello Times, there was a really nice article in last week's newspaper about all of our donors and the extent to which they have donated so generously through the year. And I think we're trying to plan, in June, we're going to plan a special thank you and a reception for those donors, but we'll certainly add to the list the folks from Holiday Gas Station and the MEDA folks, but I'm so glad that you got the furniture because there's always more things on the wish list than we have money to purchase. So thanks, Shelley, for stepping up. So we have a resolution for these donations.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School District, number 882, to gratefully accept the following donations. From MEDA, $500 for Monticello High School to purchase vape education, student licenses, and to supplement their chemical tobacco vaping curriculum. That is part of the Monticello High School's educational response to students who need it. And also from Gary Brandt, VP of Holiday Gas Stations, with gently used office furniture valued at $10,000 for Pinewood Education.
Wait here a second.
Second.
Seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of accepting our donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 5-0. Please note on the agenda that Member Melissa Curtis is now present. Moving on to our choir trip recap. For those that are joining us, maybe wondering why we have choir recaps and things like that. Part of our procedure for trips outside of the district is to have a recap at the end. So at the beginning, the responsible staff members present the trip to the board, and then the trip occurs, and then at the end, we have them come back and kind of complete the circle and tell us how the trip went. And so tonight, we welcome Mr. Nathan Herfindall, who's going to give us a briefing on the choir trip to Chicago.
Yeah, so thanks for having me here, and I have some students who are going to talk in a bit as well, share sort of some more personal experiences from what the trip was like. I'm just going to give you sort of a general recap of kind of what, when I have a little slideshow here with some pictures. I'm not great about taking pictures myself, so all of these were given to me by students. I took, I think, maybe three of these. Our first day, we of course left bright and early Monticello High School around 6:00 in the morning and headed off to Chicago. We boarded an absolutely beautiful bus. It's Trobeck's most newest bus. It's a beautiful, absolutely, like, too nice, really, to bring high schoolers to Chicago, but it, it was wonderful to be on. It was, you got inside and it had accent lights all along the ceiling, and we of course got the, got the rundown on how we had to take care of it and do a good job in there, and they really did. We made our way to Chicago and we went straight to the Willis Tower, formerly the Sears Tower, which now has the Sky Deck Chicago, and it's really an amazing view of the city. A lot of students, first time in the city, and get to go up that high. We had one student who was supposed to be here tonight, who faced his fear of heights and walked out on the ledges and really did a wonderful job. The first day was mostly travel, so then it was just a little sightseeing thing before we made it back to the hotel. The second day, and people will talk a little more with Link at this, we went to this beautiful church, St. Vincent de Paul, and had a master class. And when you walk into this church, I mean, it's as beautiful as any, as any space you've ever seen. Wonderful master class, a great director from De Paul University that worked with our students. And that was a nice little precursor to later that day. We went for a very brief trip to the Museum of Science and Industry, and then we hopped over to Fourth Presbyterian Church and had a really a wonderful concert. There was some people from the Chicago area that just happened to come in, and we heard wonderful things from them about the quality of the sound of our choirs and just the maturity of our students, and that was really fun, really fun to hear, and it was a really, really quality performance. Our third day was highlighted by Dinner Theater, Drury Lane Theater. We went and saw a production of Fiddler on the Roof, and so you can see quite a few of the, the students there that I was able to grab in a picture, getting ready for the start of the show, and almost entirely looking their best at dinner. We, we had one, one young man that wanted to make sure he was dressed up for day three and didn't bring two outfits, so he prioritized day three, and we'll get to that next. But we had a wonderful time at Fiddler. Day three, we went to Lincoln Park Zoo Shat Aquarium, both really, really neat places to see. And then we went to Gino's East, which is kind of famous for their pizza. It's the Chicago-style deep dish pizza. We finished our evening at the Lyric Opera House of Chicago and saw a production of Verdi's Aida, which I know is an experience for a lot of these young people that they've never had before. And just to see the extravagance when you walk into a place like the Lyric Opera House is, is, is really impressive. Our fourth day, and this slide's pretty boring, but we just drove back. We got up early and, and I think day four was highlighted by the fact that we were racing a snowstorm, because when we plan these trips at the end of March, of course, we're always anticipating heavy snowfall, and we made it back safely and in time. Lots of conversations with Mr. Revanek on the way to ensure we were going to get back in time, but we made it back. But that's kind of a recap of the trip, just from the logistics perspective. I'm going to call up some, some students who went. Oh, the last thing, I forgot, important detail. We had 36 students in three chaperones that went, so that was really fun to see. Yeah.
Is there a quick question on the, the trip? You mentioned a master class you went to. Can you expand on what you mean by a master class?
And I don't want to step on Alex's feet. He's going to talk about that momentarily, so if you still have questions after that, I'm happy to answer him, or maybe he can. But yeah, we're going to talk Fiddler, Opera, Master Class Concert kind of in a minute, so kind of those main educational highlights of the trip. Any other questions before we turn it over to the, to these young people here?
I would just like to request that they give us their name and what grade they're in.
Perfect, yes, we'll do that. All right, who, anybody want to go first?
Do you even get that from the tennis boys?
You might as well just all come up.
All right, so I am Alexander Frelick. I'm a senior here in the district, and I'm going to talk a little more about the master class and our concert here. So we got there, we had a master class with Dr. Esperanza. I'm not 100% able to pronounce that. And at first, when we got there, I mean, it was just a beautiful place to have that master class. I mean, we walked in, we were all blown away. We were kind of all chatting up. I mean, you see the stained glass windows, the organ in the back, and then it was just a fantastic place to sing. And then, you know, we got through some warmups, we did a little bit of singing with them, and it was just, you could just hear ourselves, we could hear ourselves beautifully. It was just amazing to be in that kind of space and just kind of have that kind of, how do I put it? It was just a different experience altogether. And then we went through the whole master class. As Dr. Herfindall will tell you, he's told us all these things before, but we listen a little differently to when someone else is telling us. And so you really, you could really feel the, the people who went on the trip, those 36 students, you could really feel them connect with each other, and we all, we all sang beautifully, from my ears at least, we all sang amazingly. And then we got to the concert shortly after that. I mean, it felt like it was all just a blur, and we got to the concert shortly after that, and it was just another fantastic space to sing in. I mean, we got to just really take in the whole, the whole church, and it was just so like, amazing to see. I mean, you see the intricate details and everything, and then you hear it, and I mean, I feel like I'm echoing in here, I mean, I'll hear myself four seconds later. It's just such a different kind of place to be in, and singing there with the people from Chicago, I mean, they've never heard us before, a few of them were on their feet, and it was just so amazing to see that they have that community. And then the Fourth Pres is also so accommodating to us. They had a room set up for us and everything, where we could do warmups for ourselves. It was just so fantastic, and I hope to do it again one day. Any questions at all? Anything?
Perfect. Turn it over.
All right, my name is Ella House, and I am a sophomore at Monticello High School, and I'm going to talk about the opera we went to. So we went to Aida, and it was just amazing. I was blown away. The Opera House, the Lyric Opera House is just stunning. It's so big, and I was so inspired by all of the different art forms that came together in the opera, and just being there and being at a show that I've, that I'll probably never ever see again, and I'll never probably ever go to an opera. And I'd always think, thought of operas as, oh, they're probably going to be boring because they're so long, and they're like, just this story that's just going on forever. But no, I was so engaged, and I was so like, excited to be there, and I'm totally going to go to an opera again after this.
My name is Trevor Koenig. I'm here to talk about Fiddler on the Roof, the musical, the Dinner Theater, I suppose. We had a wonderful dinner beforehand. The food was great, but the cheesecake, 10 times better. Oh, my gosh. It was, it was heaven on earth. But the best part was the actual musical itself. And being a choir kid, you would think I would have gone to a musical before, but that was actually my first musical. And for it being my first musical, it was amazing, it was impeccable. The production quality was awesome, eating dinner beforehand was great. The story of Fiddler on the Roof is a wonderful story. I'm not going to spoil anything, you should see it for yourself, it's amazing. But I just had such a good time. I was dressed up a little bit, not as much as the opera, but we were all having a good time, and just being there and seeing these people act and do what the people in our choir do on stage, doing this for way more people, and doing it in such a, just like, pristine, perfect way, watching it was just wonderful.
Any follow-up questions?
That concludes our presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, how was the accommodations?
They were great. We were, we were out of the city a little bit in Addison, which is, well, when you're in Chicago, it's like forever away from Chicago, but it's really only a few miles, but traffic, obviously, being what it is, it was. But we were out, and we, there was us, and there was basically very few other people. There was one other high school group from, in the Milwaukee vicinity. They were a band that was out there, and we shared a breakfast space with them for most days. Breakfast was, I thought, excellent, and they don't usually do that, but they, they do that for these tour groups that come in. And yeah, I think, I think it was, it was perfect. We had, you know, we had two different floors with, you know, some, some students and chaperones on one floor, and then me and some other students on another floor, and yeah, it, it was exactly what you would have wanted to see for a, for a hotel, perfect for, for our needs. Far enough out that, you know, we're really safe little area, you know, kind of a, the closest thing to us, there was like a quick trip, like a half mile away. Other than that, it was nothing, you know, and so it worked really well.
Were there any hiccups or anything you would do differently?
The only hiccup we had was a little bit with like, the bus routing. And I think that, you know, if, if we did it again, I'd want to make sure that we, and I don't know if it should be us or not, but to make sure they know where they're going so that they can account for overpasses not being high enough, because we were a little late for our master class, because the driver didn't know what the overpasses were going to be like. And so we, we actually had to U-turn in a, in a coach bus in a city street in Chicago, which was something I'd never, and I've done a lot, I've never done that before. Other than that, the, the kids were great, you know, we do, we, or I try to do a good job of keeping them on a meticulous schedule and make sure they're ready to go before it's time to go, and we do our countoff when we get on the, when we get off and on the, the bus, and so we're ready with everybody to go. But yeah, everything logistically went really well, minus that little hiccup with some of the bus routes.
Hope you can reflect that back to the tour company?
Yeah, and we, we have. Yep. Yeah, we actually did during the U-turning and then also afterwards, so. Did that answer your question, Casey, about the master class?
Oh, mine was more of what, what qualifies as a master class, I guess.
Yeah, so you.
Process or learning structure, what?
So basically, the, the situation would be, you have, a choir director brings in their choir for like a guest clinician, so usually it's a college director from somewhere else, and you give them the music, and you sing for them, and then they kind of give you feedback on your performance, they maybe say something that hasn't been said, or say something differently, and it's an opportunity to kind of, you know, further hone your, your music, or you know, kind of improve the performance quality. And I will say, having it right before, as Alex pointed out, having it right before, our, our performance was fantastic. And the, the space that we sang in that first space was, was probably too wet. When you talk about acoustics, you talk about wet versus dry, and it was probably close to a six-second reverberation in that first space, which is too much for most everything. Whereas then when we got to Fourth Presbyterian, that was a three-ish, three-ish second, which was perfect. And so it really, if it had been the opposite way, it would have maybe not set us up for success, but doing it in that order was great. So then everybody was really keyed in to listen, and they really, really did sing fantastically. I, I don't know the, the process of how far along this is going, but there was one lady from Chicago who was moved by the performance and intends on, on making a donation to our, to our program at some point. We didn't have the means to do that at the time, so we just kind of said, well, here's the website, and, you know, email these people. But I don't know the process of that, but it, they were, they were certainly moved by the, by the, you know, by the performance and the fact that they were high schoolers singing the way they were, because that, that, that doesn't happen. You know, you may not know this, and my students do now, but Minnesota is a special place for choir music. The only place in the country that can even compete would be Texas. We're, we're better than everybody else when it comes to choir music, especially at the high school level. So for us to go to Chicago shows them something they haven't seen from high school kids in, in that area very often. So it's, it's flyover country for a lot of things, I say this all the time, but, but not, not choir, not, not even close. So yeah, that, that master class being right there really kind of focused everybody and, and led to a, I think what was a really rewarding performance experience.
Anybody else?
Sounds like an excellent trip.
Yeah.
Just one, like, quick, and just because, two seniors who have experienced a lot here at our high school, sophomore, school board has to approve night trips. Why do you think they should do that in the, in the future?
Good question.
Up to the, to the microphone, because we live stream, so that way the, the people listening and the video can capture your comments. Thank you.
There's a lot of kids that this is like the first time they've maybe been to Chicago, and that was me, I'd never been to Chicago, and there's a lot of kids that had a lot of firsts on that trip, and to give that opportunity to those kids is an amazing thing that we can do here in Monticello.
I wouldn't even say, like, especially for the arts programs, going on these trips, as we were going on the trip, especially like the master class, during our concert, while we were all doing these things together, I really felt closer to my peers, a lot more than I had previously. And then after this trip, I felt like it not only made us a stronger choir, but, you know, brought us closer, made us more of a family, which is honestly why I'm part of these arts programs. I'm part of musical and one act, and all I see is just that family forming, and this trip brought us even closer together. And again, like Trevor said, there's nothing like it.
Yeah, I go on like church camp overnight, but like, I've never been out of the state overnight, and just being with this specific choir and this specific group of people, it just blew me away. Like, I had, I'd just joined this semester for this choir, and I felt out of place. I felt like I was the new kid, and just being on this trip, just it helped me figure out that I was accepted, and I wasn't as new as I thought I was, so.
Excellent feedback. Thank you so much. I want to thank Dr. Herfindall and the other two, I can't remember who the other two chaperones were, but the giving of your time and taking our kids to have these experiences that they wouldn't get any other time is really amazing, and I want to thank them tremendously. So we, I, we know that the sports teams get a lot of opportunity to travel and, you know, participate in their, what they're passionate about, but I love to see that the arts gets a chance to do that as well. So thank you for coming tonight, too.
Thank you.
Well, it will be hard to, to move on from that, but we will try. So we are now moving on to our wonderful Director of Business, Tina Burkholder, who is going to talk with us about our new transportation contract options, and we welcome Tina. Not as much fun as the choir trip, but it's still transportation.
Yeah, it's still no fun going after kids, so. So tonight, I'm bringing for the final transportation agreement with Hoagland's Transportation for the next five years. So in the agreement, next year is set with certain rates, and then after that, it depends on the January CPI report, not to exceed 5%, but not to go below 0%. So in the case of, there's a minus inflation adjustment that we don't go below 0. We only had one other vendor that wanted to bid on our transportation, but that was just on type 3 transportation, so, and we presented that last work session. Some cost factors that are affecting our transportation partner were mentioned, but I'll state those again, the cost of vehicles, unemployment costs, property insurance costs, the earned safe and sick time, paid family leave time that will come in 2026, health insurance, and making sure all our buses have the. insurance and making sure all our buses have the camera and GPS equipment. But even with that in mind, we're below Elk River's rate for next year. They're at $493 per route. Rochester's at 507 and St. Cloud's at 487. Anoka and Ossio are still, I think, working on their transportation contracts. So I think we work well with Hoagland's and they'll be a nice partner to continue have for the next five years. And in there, there's a clause where we could open it up again for another five years.
Five years is a long time. Impressed that they were willing to come forward for five years. Questions or discussion from the board? Mark's taking his glasses off.
It means I don't-
Okay. No further discussion. I think we've seen this information now two or three times, so this is not the first time we've been presented with this. So this is an action item and so we have before us the proposed contract for the next five years for transportation services as presented by Tina Burkholder.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the contract as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Transportation contract is approved five and zero. Moving on just briefly to a community legislative update. This is in regard to our Wright Technical Center. You may, folks that are here may recall that we have been working with legislators and with the Wright Technical Center on a funding initiative from the legislature. I'm going to ask Melissa if she has anything she wants to say about this in particular.
I don't have my write-up here right now, but just a bonding bill that, to help out Wright Tech Center and their funding for redoing the facilities that need some maintenance.
And the way the funding for the Wright Technical Center goes is currently, each of the eight-member districts approves money that we submit as part of their long-term facilities maintenance, but the Wright Tech Center, if I'm saying this incorrectly, someone, please correct me, but they in and of themselves do not have levy authority. And so to make up the difference, the legislature needs to fund the Wright Technical Center. So I believe Eric, you actually went to a tour and there were legislators that were out there, want to say anything about that?
Yeah, no, I think as far as the people who have been coming to Wright Technical Center, I mean, they've been very supportive and so, you know, we sent communication out district-wide in hopes that more people besides just school board and administrators are encouraging their support. We hope though, you know, it'd be great to see the whole community, but, you know, we'll try right again here and see if we can drum up that, that business, so.
And so from, from my perspective, we have, the provision for the funding is included in an omnibus bill at the present time. And so I contacted all four of our legislators, two in Sherburne County, two in Wright County, and I've attached Senator Bruce Anderson's comments back to me. He is very supportive of the, of the bill and believes that it will go through this session. So that's just kind of an update and that's why we included it, to show our support for Wright Technical Center. We do have approximately 110 students from the high school that attend Wright Tech Center, so we are assisting them in their efforts to obtain funding for their facilities. So there's no action required, it's just an update. So moving on to teaching and learning, we have Mr. John Weekly, who's our Director of Special Education Co-op here with us the evening, this evening. Welcome, John. He has a wonderful presentation for us on the state of special education in our district.
I might need your assistance, I'm locating it. Hello, members of the board and community, community members. Nice to see you all. I'm going to do a overview of the cooperative programs as well as updates regarding our special ed program and our partnership with the Monticello District for Special Education Services. So I'm John Weekly, I'm the Director of Special Education. I'm coming into, I can't believe it, my, into my second year, this has just gone extremely fast, but we've been working really hard on kind of evaluating our cooperative programs and our special education programs across the three-member districts. As you know, the cooperative serves not only Monticello, but also Big Lake and Becker. And so we've been working really closely with administrative teams, teaching teams from across those three-member districts and developing our strategic plan on how we want to support students with special needs, as well as continue to be innovative in our program development. So I'm going to talk about the cooperative programs, an update on our strategic planning, some program additions that we'll be anticipating for next year, and some changes in how we are programming for special education students. So just a quick overview of the current services and programs that we offer through the cooperative model. We provide special education administrations, so we have special ed coordinators that are assigned to each of the member districts. We have one in, one in Becker, we have two in Big Lake, and then we have three in Monticello. And that's because Monticello is, is the host site for our cooperative programs. In addition, we have one coordinator that is split between the three different districts providing early childhood services. We have school psychologists that provide services in the schools in all three-member districts. And then we provide related services such as deaf or hard of hearing services, vision, physically impaired, ASL, which is American Sign Language, occupational therapists, physical therapists. And we have a couple dedicated staff that serve as assistive technology leaders, helping us be as innovative as possible in supporting the needs of students. As technology continues to advance, we need them to be leaders in that field to capitalize on assistive technology tools. We have early childhood special education evaluators that work in our member districts in Monticello and we provide special education reporting and monitoring in the, for the member districts. We have a grant writer, that's a new, new addition as of last year, I believe in January she started, and has had some good success in providing us with additional resources and funding sources for two big priority areas for us, one of them being staff acquiring more special education teachers through the pipeline grant and additionally supporting safety in our member districts through a collaborative effort between the three-member districts as well as law enforcement to provide video technology for safety as well as more of a collaborative approach in safety in general. We provide, we have one cooperative nurse that provides services to students that are in the cooperative programs. And our programs go from age birth through 22. So we have birth to three yearly intervention, includes home visits. We have K through 12 center-based development cognitive delayed programs as well as programs for students that have autism. We have a setting four program, we have setting four programs for those areas as well, developmental cognitive disabilities, autism and emotional behavioral disorders. And we have three transition programs, and I'll talk a little bit more about the transition programs as we go, but we have three transition programs that are, that provide services for students. And one of them is housed in Big Lake and two of them are currently housed in Monticello at separate sites, but I'll talk a little bit more about some program changes in regards to transition. All of our planning has gone through kind of four different funnels. We're looking at student programming and achievement. So we currently are assessing our curriculum that we're utilizing in special education, partnering with, with building administration to look at using best practices, using data to inform our planning, but also to use research-based curriculum. And provide, we have a variety of supplemental curriculum that we currently utilize. We're also working with the member districts in regards to the REED Act and becoming better versed to provide services in that area. Organizational, the other lens is organizational supports and services. And so the best way to explain that is we're looking at our efficiencies right now and trying to maximize our resources and our resources are our special education staff. And how do we set up a system that allows us to efficiently cover student needs in a wide variety of ways? And some of that is involved restructuring, bringing programs together. We, we took steps this year to strategically place some of our setting four programs in close proximity to each other, maximize staff coverage in, in all cases, primarily safety. We're continuing to make some adjustments moving into next year with more strategic planning regarding how we are going to place these programs. We're looking at it from a here and now, we have an emerging need, we have some, some areas of programming where we've had, not had consistent programming. We have areas where we don't have a full continuum of services. So we've been working in partnership with Monticello to have a full continuum of services, setting one, two and three in Monticello programs, but also having setting four capability for students that have that unique need. The settings, the best way to explain it is it's amount of percentage of time that a student is in a regular education classroom and has access to the regular, sorry, stuttering, I need a drink of water maybe, that is in the mainstream classroom. And so for example, if a student is in, out of, out of the mainstream classroom more than 50% of the time, they'd be in a setting four program. And so the more that they are out for special education services, the higher the level of service that they would be receiving. And so we want to, the goal is to be as inclusive as possible and give students access to the regular education opportunities, but also recognize that at times students need specialized curriculum and supports. And that has allowed us to develop more setting four programs. So we've had programming, thank you for rescuing me here, I got a dry mouth going. So we have currently within our cooperative, as of today, programming for setting four students with emotional behavioral disorders up through middle school. We're hoping to be able to expand that for students that are in high school, because there are students that need that specialized level of care. We also have special education setting four programs for students with autism or developmental cognitive delays, delays that also have an element of dysregulation in, in areas up through secondary, but not necessarily elementary. Next year, with some of these program changes, we'll have programming options for, for A through 22 is the goal. Another lens of our strategic plan is safe and welcoming environment. So we're currently analyzing our data, you know, in regards to injuries in cases when students become dysregulated, but also looking to see what is that cause for that dysregulation and taking steps to provide students with that support and staff with the training necessary to provide a safe and welcoming environment. We're collaborating really strongly and I want to say we have an excellent collaboration going between our member districts, between our superintendents, superintendent's level, governing board level, and with our coordinator, special ed leaders and our principals. We're looking at opportunities to really be strategic in how we collaborate, but opening opportunities not only for special education students through the cooperative, but also through general education initiatives. We want to support all students and use the cooperative as a way to meet the needs of as many students as possible. So we're continuing in our planning to look at opportunities to broaden the scope of the cooperative. The elementary program I want to highlight right now is the Foundations One program. And so that program is a setting four program for elementary students who need a higher level of support and structure in a small setting. Current program is operated at Little Mountain Elementary. It's been a great placement for us and I want to thank Nicole Carto for her support this year in that setting four program. But we're looking, we're outgrowing that space over there and simultaneously, Little Mountain is expanding their continuum of special education supports by offering setting three program. And the goal is to move the Foundations One program out of there and move it over to a more suitable location that'll allow for some growth and also allow us to be more efficient in our staff structure and supports. The program serves students from Becker, Big Lake and Monticello and currently it's kind of capped out at about a maximum of eight students. By relocating it to the middle school next year, we would be able to expand our program options, increase the number of students that would benefit from that program. We'd have improved functionality, the spaces set up differently for safety as well as instruction. And the room, there'd be room for growth and it would allow Little Mountain to move into the Foundations One space and grow programming options at Little Mountain Elementary. The Foundations Two is our secondary program for students with emotional and behavioral disorders that have that level of setting four need. And that program is currently located here at the middle school in Monticello. And it also serves students from Becker, Big Lake and Monticello and its maximum, maximum has been about eight to 10 students. They're bigger students and so we've kept that number a little bit lower. With the elementary moving into that, we'll be able to expand the amount of students in that program. We would be moving the secondary program over to the location that was currently inhabited by the ALP program, Monticello ALP program. So it's over at the workforce center location. Bigger space allows us to add high school students into that program and it provides, again, increased functionality of programming, more flexible learning environment, and it hits the marks in regards to safety as well, giving us a safe environment to operate out of that setting four program. It also will allow us to form partnerships, improve partnerships with Central Minnesota Jobs and Trainings, which is located at that location, as well as Volk Rehab Services, which will help us with our transition planning for these students. Another program I want to highlight, our setting four program, is our RISE program. And the RISE program serves students that have, that do, that were referred due to cognitive delays and autism, but also coupled with severe high behaviors. And that program is currently oper, is operating out of the Monticello Middle School. It's, it only serves secondary students currently. Space is kind of a critical barrier for us in regards to expansion of programming. These students have been referred to the program due to those cognitive delays, high behaviors, and so safety is a, is a key feature of it. And we're going to locate that, relocate that program also over to that workforce center location and that'll allow us to improve efficiencies with our safety response teams, be able to use social work allocations more effectively, nursing, our coordinator time, leadership. So it just allows us to operate in a more efficient manner. And these setting four programs, we, we definitely do not want to be on islands, so the more that we can couple together, it allows for maximizing resources, but also the team approach to managing student needs. We have three 18 to 22 programs. There's been some legislative change recently that allows students that have a continuing need in the area of transition that is identified in their evaluation to continue with education through age 22. We have three programs because not all students are created the same and we want to have a continuum of support for students in 18 to 22 programming. And right now we have a program called C, C5, which is students with the lowest level of independence. So typically those are students with a developmental cognitive delay or autism. They tend to need a lot of support initially, but the goal is to help them become as independent as possible, so they can have a fulfilling life, which includes the transition areas, employment, home living, community participation, recreation and leisure. And so they may initially start off in more of a center-based work environment, but the goal is to be able to advance them up to higher levels of independence. So that brings in our other two programs. I would say that our connections program that is operating in Monticello would be that middle tier of independence and our connections program that operates in Big Lake at the food shop in Big Lake would be our highest level of independence. Those programs have been operating kind of a little bit in silos and we want to bring them together to work more collaboratively and we want to really incorporate the Minnesota's transition framework as kind of one of our guiding principles. And that allows us to individualize our approach to helping that student meet their transition pathway and their goal after completing school. If their goal is to go to college, we have transition program and that can support that. If their goal is to work into the workforce center, the workforce after completing programming, we want to make sure that we are supporting their individualized needs. So each of these programs, although they've been kind of operating on, on a level where they provided those tiers of support, we want to bring them together closer and we're going to do that. We're going to bring those programs together underneath one org site, they've been separate org sites, and we're going to be able to utilize that to not only differentiate their programming, but also be able to provide improved capability for these students to move quickly up the appropriate level of support as they become more independent. And if something changes in their life where they need a higher level of independence, we have the programming that we can also bring them back into a more supportive environment for that instruction. The programming is going to continue to be a work in progress here for a little while as we navigate MDE's transition framework. We're, we want to- We want to be able to build that in on the front end as it's been being developed. And so, in order to do that, we're going to use our allocations of staff a little bit differently and have one of the staff members serve as a facilitator type role across the three different programs while still providing our coordinator time and working towards improving our programming in relation to that framework of transition. So watch for more updates as we continue to work over the summer with the program development. There'll be opportunities to visit the sites at a future date. The programs that are switching over to the workforce center, construction will be happening over the summer with an anticipated start at the beginning of the school year. However, as we know, construction can have some delays, so we do have contingency plans in place. All of our programs, if construction wasn't completed at the workforce center location, would stay put in their current homes, except for one program, which would be the Little Mountain Foundations Program. But the ALP location is at a point where we'd be able to move that program into that space and not have any delays with the start of the school year. And then, we would find out when the anticipated construction timelines are and make adjustments with our start of those program and their new locations accordingly. Thank you for your time and support. Do you have any questions regarding cooperative updates?
I have one. At the beginning, you talked about a pipeline grant for additional employees and time. Do you know what is, how long, or how many employees, and how long does that grant cover?
So currently, we have funding for up to five years of tuition reimbursement. But we are able to start off in year one with between eight and 10 licensed staff across the cooperative. So it's divided between Becker, Big Lake, Monticello, and the cooperative programs. And so, we're anticipating probably two in each of those columns to start off with. But based off individual circumstances, if somebody has already started a program and has advanced to a certain level, they may not need the entire 15,000 scholarship. We may be able to add more on the front end. And then, each year, we'll be able to add additional opportunities as we continue to bring people into that program. But I anticipate, we have two dedicated slots for Monticello that would target anybody that is on either, it's eligible for peer professionals that are just starting, wanting to, or any employee, actually. And then additionally, tier one and tier two licensure people are, individuals are eligible. There is some legislative conversations happening. It hasn't been finalized yet. Then I may open it up for anybody that even has a tier three or four license that wants to go into special education. We're just waiting to hear if that is going to go through in the next couple of weeks, I believe.
Okay.
That could be an opportunity. The pipeline grant is our first foray into really collaborative project with the three member districts in relation to grants. And so, it may be very much in development as we go to, and it's going to, we're navigating right now the application processes. We've received a lot of interest, which is very encouraging. Now, it's the difficult part of identifying who is going to receive that scholarship. And so, we're doing that as part of a cross-district collaborative effort where we have representation from each of the districts that are going to do that screening process, knowing that each of them will have a balanced amount of individuals that they can get started with.
And then, the approval for that scholarship, is that just handled with them locally, or does it come up to the border? How does that route?
So as the grant is written, I believe that we're able to approve that through our grant committee.
Okay.
And along with that, you mentioned the board. For the benefit of the community of Ewing, there is a board of directors for the Special Education Co-op that is separate from the Monticello School District Board. Jeff Hegley is our representative to that board, and functions largely relationship similar to how we do with Wright Technical Center. So it may be a little bit confusing for some folks that don't understand the way the co-op is structured.
We have a governing board that is representative of board members from each of the member districts, as well as superintendents do attend those as well. We have superintendent advisory meetings as well amongst the three superintendents to do a lot of the strategic planning and discussions.
I think you've done a really masterful job of moving the programs around. Are you still in need of additional space, do you think, in the future?
I believe our.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
I would say that, you know, as student needs change, we're going to constantly be evaluating it. So we're kind of doing strategic planning on the here and now, what we know, but also forecasting down the road. I would anticipate areas of growth for us will continue to be students with emotional and behavioral disorders as well as autism. Those are areas that are rising, and if we look at our numbers, we can forecast that we'll probably need to do, have additional capacity in the future for those programs, particularly when we hit the transition age. And particularly, an area that I would say that we would need to continue to have growth would be transition programming for students that are coming up through our RISE programs, those students with autism that also have that unique behavioral component to them. And their work environments will be different than a typical learner's. And they'll have to, we'll have to be really innovative in that. So that'll be our next phase of that transition programming planning. I anticipate, as we bring these programs all underneath one org site and just kind of try to unify our approaches with them, that'll be an area that we'll have to add some level of programming, which will require some unique space for safety. We don't want to hinder students' access to the community, but based off of dysregulation, we need to tuck them in a little bit more to provide that level of support until they're ready to access more out in the community. So I would say down the road, it'd be transition programming for Setting Four students that I anticipate are a growth area for us. We're continuing to look at partnerships with, you know, Big Lake and Becker as well because they are members and there are space considerations in their programs. So I could see where maybe we prioritize shifting some programs over into those locations in order to free up programming options over here that are in proximity to other programs. And so, we'll continue to look at efficiencies as we move forward with the model. Helps with transportation costs. It helps with safety, obviously. It helps with just the logistics of planning by, the less you have your special ed leadership team bouncing from building to building to building, use auto efficiency and communication in that regard. So it'll help with communication, just help stabilize programs.
Thank you for that elaboration on that. I know that the space issues is something that we certainly talk about regularly, and we'll make sure that we keep that on our strategic planning at least a couple of times a year to revisit that so that we can stay ahead of the needs before they are in the rearview mirror, so to speak. So any other additional discussion or questions for Mr. Weekly from the board? Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you, and I thank you for your support of all of our students, but particularly through my lens, the special education students. And it's been a really, really fun two years, and I thank Eric for his support with our programs as a host for predominant number of our cooperative programs. And so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, John.
You honed in on perfect, just a sample of everything that is going on. So it was a very nice presentation.
It's a very complex topic to boil down, and I appreciate you explaining, going into more depth about some of the programs.
I would love the opportunity, and maybe it's a summer opportunity, because I would love to also get together some of the board members from the other member districts, do some tours, and just do some more organic conversations. I think it would be, it would be a good opportunity to show, show the programs and have more of a, you'll be able to, you'll have, it'll come up with a lot of questions as we kind of navigate through them, and I'd love that opportunity.
I think we're going to do it. So it sounds great, and thank you so much for your presentation this evening. So moving on to safe and healthy culture, we'll wait for that to show, for the agenda to show back up. We are very fortunate to be at the end of the school year when we have a lot of days of recognition. We have administrative professionals, we have school principals, teachers, school lunch professionals and paraprofessionals, and school nurses all in the same timeframe. And so, I'm going to have each board member that is working in these respective areas to talk about these areas. So Mark, do you want to go first for administrative professionals?
I sure will. Dated April 24th, 2024, we sent the following letter, and Euphony was kind enough to get it on the district website and the school websites as a news bulletin to administrative professionals. Dear Administrative Professionals, On behalf of the Monticello School District 882 School Board, we express our gratitude to all the dedicated administrative professionals on the special occasion of Administrative Professionals Day. On a daily basis, your commitment to our motto, "Every kid, every day," is displayed through the various roles you take on with a team player attitude. Each of the students across the Monticello School District benefits from your efforts through your support to others before and/or after the school day or through a direct impact to students and staff during the school day. Each day, your professionalism, kindness, and patience are on display as an example of integrity as you interact with students, teachers, community members, and parents. Your impact on the culture of the Monticello School District and Monticello community will carry on for years beyond your tenure as an administrative professional. Today, we recognize you for the significant contribution you make through unwavering dedication and service. Your positive influence extends beyond the office, workstation, or building in creating and nurturing a supportive educational environment for all our students. Your friendly smiles and encouraging communication make a significant difference in our students' academic experience. Please know, we appreciate the work you do in serving every kid, every day. Your continued dedication to our school district and community is a critical building block in the path forward for the next generation. From all of us on the Monticello School Board, a deep thank you for your service and for the exceptional service provided on a daily basis to Monticello Schools. Sincerely, the Monticello School Board.
For those that maybe don't remember back to January, the six members of the school board are divided up onto different contract teams and liaisons to buildings and different teams. And so, we try to sustain the relationships with those groups and get to know their jobs better, get to know what they do better. And so, this is one of the ways that we can recognize each of these individual groups. So moving on to school principals' days.
Yeah, well, this is my attempt at coming back strong. This is one of two things I'll be doing this week for principals. They all know that it was school principals' day when we had a big meeting. And I did not remember it was school principals' day. So I forged through the meeting, and then, at the end of the meeting, it brought to my attention that it was school principals' day yesterday. So I announced that I missed it today, and so I really missed it twice. So I'll do my best to not miss it ever again. I'm filled with deep sense of gratitude and admiration of the remarkable individuals who lead our schools, our principals. They're balancing act specialists. They deserve every accolade and appreciation for their tireless efforts in shaping the future of our students and our staff in our district. At the heart of our district's success lie four strategic priorities: teaching and learning, collaborative connections, safe and healthy culture, and innovation and leadership. These pillars not only guide our path, but also embody the essence of the collective mission going on in our district. It is through the diligent grit of our principals that these priorities are not mere words, but living, breathing realities in our schools. With resilience, grace, and integrity, our principals navigate the complexities of their roles, balancing thousands of responsibilities with finesse. They exemplify a service-minded approach, listening intently to the needs of our students, staff, and families while striving to meet them with compassion and understanding. Yet amidst the challenges and demands of their roles, our principals infuse joy and enthusiasm. Their camaraderie, they share together, the laughter that echoes through the halls, and genuine connections they forge with staff, students, and families are a testament to their passion for education. There is perhaps no greater joy than witnessing our principals wholeheartedly dedicated to nurturing and empowering the next generation. Their commitment to preparing our students to be compassionate, resilient, and forward-thinking leaders is both inspiring and humbling. On behalf of the entire Monticello community, I extend our deepest gratitude to our principals for their extraordinary contributions. They're not merely administrators, but catalysts for change and champions of excellence. Even in the face of adversity, they wear their smiles like badges of honor, reminding us all that optimism and perseverance are the cornerstones of their true north. Right before I started reading our letter, my dad saw it. Sorry for the side view the whole time, but.
Thank you, Principal, or Superintendent Olson, for recognition for our principals, and they do so much for us. And they stay late, and they come to these boring meetings and sit in the back of the room and look attentive. So I'm very appreciative of that as well, and smile.
They never know when we're going to call on you, right?
We just, it's like, we get to be the teacher. Come up and raise your hand, or something like that. So moving on to our teacher appreciation week, we have board member Casey Root. What's about that?
Excellent. And also, before this, Jeff and I are on a group meeting with the Teachers Monthly, the Teachers Union. We have a good conversation each month with them. Dear Monticello Teachers, On behalf of the Monticello School District 882 School Board, we express our gratitude to dedicated teachers who support the growth and knowledge development of students. Eloquence is a word that comes to mind when I think of teachers. Not only through dedication and delivery of knowledge and the enduring support towards growth and development of students, in everyday chaos, you are creators of knowledge and architects of intellect who shape the future through connecting on clarity and understanding, found and memorable impact on students. There is no shortage of commitment or limited perseverance, starting with their beginnings when a student grasps a concept for the first time, through the end of their time here where they can harness and utilize their skills to succeed in any path they choose. To achieve the student growth and development is no small feat due to many factors, including the ever-changing educational landscape and complexities of adopting new curriculums, the technological impacts that arise. Your dedication to teaching allows you to view these as opportunities for growth rather than roadblocks. We also realize that our teachers are not binary in their role, simply disseminating information for a response. Instead, you are the catalyst of transformation, which empowers students to unlock their fullest potential. Beyond the textbooks and lessons plans is also where you make an impact. For those that help in all-school activities, whether it's sports, music, or the arts, we want to extend thanks for your time and dedication. Even though collectively you're a large group, we know that each one of you are unique in both your skill set and delivery of student support. We appreciate the drive to support every kid, every day with the positive influence, daily encouragement, and leaders whom we meet with monthly to make sure you are receiving the support needed for administration to achieve the learning objectives set forth. Sincerely, School Board. I think tonight, one of the presentations too on our side was, well, the trip. So there's a lot going, a lot of good things going on with the school, a lot of good things going on with teachers. And I think collectively as a whole, it's a great community in the school, so.
Thank you, Casey. And moving on to nutrition professionals, Vice Chair Jamie Seabin is going to have a few words.
Dear Monticello Food Service workers, On the School Lunch Hero Day, on behalf of the Monticello School District 882 School Board, I'm writing to extend our deepest gratitude and admiration to each and every one of you for your dedication and tireless efforts in providing nutritious meals to our students. Your commitment to ensuring that every child has access to healthy food is truly commendable and does not go unnoticed. Your hard work not only nourishes our students' bodies, but also contributes to their overall well-being and success. You are the dedicated heroes whose tireless efforts behind the scenes positively impacts our students' lives. From leading educational initiatives and conducting taste tests to attending students' athletic events, building meaningful connections over the years of your service, we are incredibly grateful for all that you do. Your passion, compassion, and dedication shines through in every meal you prepare and served with a smile. It is evident that you are, that you truly care about the well-being of our students. Your role is invaluable, and the impact you have on our school community is immeasurable. On behalf of the entire Monticello School District, I want to thank you for your outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to our students. You are true heroes, and we are fortunate to have you as part of our school family. And I know I can just speak from my own children's personal experience. They absolutely love it, and they get to know who's serving them every day. And they've attended my own son's sporting events and get excited and build those connections. And so, it's pretty cool to see from every level how connected our kids are to all the staff in our schools, but specifically our food service workers.
Thank you, Jamie. And moving on to the last one of our groups, certainly not the least, but our school nurses and school health professionals, health support specialists. Today, I believe, is Nurses' Day nationwide, and the eighth will be School Nurses' Day nationwide. And so, on behalf of the entire Board of Monticello School District 882, I'd like to extend our sincere thanks and appreciation to all of our school nurses and our health support specialists. As we celebrate School Nurses' Day on May the 8th, I want to take a moment to recognize the valuable role you play in our school community. Your dedication, compassion, and expertise makes a real and positive difference in the lives of our students, staff, and parents. lives of our students, staff, and parents. When a student becomes ill at school, your professionalism on the phone call to a parent communicates calm reassurance in the midst of an unexpected illness. Whether it's providing first aid for minor scrapes and bruises, or offering a listening ear to students in need, your kindness and care leave an indelible mark on our school community. Your commitment to promoting wellness goes beyond the confines of your office and everyday tasks, such as monitoring vaccination records and administering medications. You educate our community about healthy habits, advocate for the well-being of every student, and ensure that our school environment remains safe and conducive to learning. In times of uncertainty and crisis, your calm demeanor and confident actions are a source of comfort, especially to our youngest students. You are not only a healthcare provider, but also an example of strength. Your efforts to keep us healthy and informed do not go unnoticed. On this special day, I want to extend my sincere appreciation for everything you do. Your professionalism and unwavering dedication to our students inspire all of us to be better and healthier individuals. Thank you for being an indispensable part of our Monticello Schools' family, wishing you a joyful and fulfilling School Nurses' Day. So thank you. To all of our professionals across the district, that has been an initiative that we've tried really hard as a board over the last couple of years, is trying to remember to say thank you more often, because it's something that we can do that makes people understand that we really do notice at all levels of the organization, the contributions of everyone, trying to make things better for the organization, for the students, and for the staff. So thank you to everyone. So following that, we have Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, that's going to do first reading of policies for us this evening.
Chair Zebarth, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. We have two policies this month for first reading, and again, that's not for lack of purpose or workload for the policy committee. The policy committee is also, this is the time of year when we review handbooks, and so the policy committee reviewed the handbooks at their last policy meeting for both elementary and middle, and those will be on a board agenda in June. And then, so the priority for tonight was these two policies, which both have to do specifically with the high school and, to a lesser extent, the elementary transition to trimester model. So the first number is number 613, graduation requirements. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for graduation from the Monticello Public School District. Within the draft policy, again, there's been significant modifications based on the transition from semester to trimester, and in the amendments, there is a move from requiring, for instance, for the class of 25, 27 credits, fast-forwarding through the class of 28, getting up to 34 credits as necessary in the trimester model. This policy also outlines, just for the public, if they would like to take a look at it, the credit requirements and the specific requirement areas, and so that's always good reading to make sure that we're familiar with that as well. So that is 613.
So for board members, you all have the access to the first reading. Please read that and forward any questions that you might have, and be prepared for second reading and adoption at the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Daniker.
And also 536.
Oh, sorry, I did it again, second time.
It's okay.
Just throw something at me. He always pauses like he's done. He's done, done.
So policy 536 is the Turning Point ALP Early Graduation Policy. The purpose of this policy is to set forth requirements for early graduation from Turning Point ALP. Due to student medical, social, emotional, family, or financial obligations and accreditation structures, students at Turning Point ALP who qualify can be approved to graduate early from the Monticello School District. And so again, the modifications here are fairly simple. It really was a strike-through of three terms, the replacement with similar but different terms based on moving from semester to trimester. And I'm done now.
I apologize for that again. So we do have two policies on first read for the board to digest and see if they have any additional questions or comments before second read, and I thank you, Mr. Daniker. And finding that our agenda is complete, we are adjourned at 6:09. We will reconvene at 6:20. Allow everyone for a short break. Thank you.
Yeah.